I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Regional Planning Commission of Johnson City for August 10th, night 2021. And first of all, first order of business, I'd like to welcome two new commissioners to the council. Ms. Rowena Bailey, welcome. Mr. Dr. Sean Ossenbaum, welcome. Thank you for your service in advance. Now, Timbora, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance and our invocation, please?
I will. Do we do the pledge first and then?
Yes, I think we do the pledge first.
Okay.
If you'll please say.
Everyone stay in place.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could everybody pray with me, please? Dear heavenly Father, we come this evening to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and support as we begin this meeting. Give us clarity so that we can effectively tackle each part of tonight's agenda. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the city of Johnson City, our region, and all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Lord, I pray that you grant us insight to lead with integrity, that decisions may reflect what is right and good. Keep us from short-sightedness. Help us each to listen attentively and politely as others share their points of view. God, we love you. We are so thankful that we live in such a wonderful community as Johnson City. I pray you will bless each and every one of us here tonight. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Now, before us, you have the agenda. Are there any comments or changes to the agenda?
Not the agenda, sorry.
Okay.
Move approval.
Move for approval?
Yes.
Forgive me, just real quick, I just want to make sure that the commission is aware, this was as of today, staff provided an addendum to the agenda. Some of you may or may not have seen that. It is not an action item, so we're not asking that you vote on anything, so understand that that can be somewhat difficult with an addendum. This is an item that Ms. Hodges will present to you, asking that it be sent to committee. So if you would include that. Does the printed copy they have in front of them, Nicole, have the other, the addendum on it?
That would be item one under other, is that right, Ms. Lawrence?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Move approval with the change.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, before you also have the minutes of the meeting of July 13th, 2021. Are there any changes to be made or suggestions?
On page three, I may be reading this wrong, but under item number B, it says the owners would like to us this piece of land, and I think that probably just needs to be corrected.
Yes.
Okay.
You've got that, Nicole?
I sure do.
Any other changes?
Go ahead. Another one, the name of the road on the Watauga River thing was not Chalk Creek Road, but Chalk Creek Road, C-H-O-C-K.
Okay.
You've got that, Nicole?
I do.
Thank you. Any other changes or corrections? I'm looking for a motion.
That's a move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we move into the section for new business, and tonight's, one of tonight's activities is to elect officers for the upcoming year. So we'll start with the office of chairperson. I'll open the floor for nominations for chairperson.
I would nominate Commissioner Dagenhart, who is currently serving his chair right now, to serve in that position going forward.
Second.
Thank you.
Third, fourth, fifth, sixth.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, what about for the position of vice-chairperson? Any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Jamie Poblitch.
Nominate Jamie Poblitch?
Second.
Due to unforeseen circumstances, I may be missing several meetings, and I'll know more here in the next three or four weeks. And being that this is an important role, I would feel uncomfortable accepting the nomination because if I'm not here, then that puts this board at a challenge. So I appreciate the nomination, sir. I would have to not accept, though.
With that in mind, I would like to, at this point, nominate Benjamin Whitfield.
Yes, Benjamin Whitfield.
Second.
Second? Second by whom, please?
Sean.
Commissioner Ossenbaum seconded. Any other nominations?
He's not here to defend himself.
No, but do we have the same situation with Dr. Whitfield as you, in the fact that he's gone so much?
Perhaps. I just know that he had, he had reached out and won over that position, but that's a valid point as well.
Are there any other nominations?
If I can go down the list, I would. I've served with Mr. Hickson on many different boards and on this board for several years. I think he's more than qualified. This is new to him, so we haven't had a conversation, but I would feel comfortable nominating him as well.
Second?
I don't know that I'm qualified or have the time to serve in that capacity, but I appreciate the support.
So is that an acceptance or a decline?
A decline.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations?
We nominate Brett.
Why don't we vote on Dr. Whitfield? I think we came, so we had a nomination and a second.
All right. I'll call the vote. Benjamin Whitfield is assistant chairperson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Dr. Whitfield will be vice-chair. Now, we have the office of secretary. Any nomination, open the floor for nominations for secretary.
I'll nominate Commissioner Roth.
Commissioner who?
Roth, I think I'm saying, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes.
Close enough.
Sorry. Sorry.
Go here, second?
Second.
Second.
Any other nominations? Let's call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Commissioner Rhodey. All right, now for the position of assistant secretary. Open the floor for nominations.
I thought that, Nicole, is that not your position?
Oh, no, I'm staff.
You're recording.
Staff appointed recording, so you will need an assistant. And the assistant secretary will step in when the secretary cannot come and sign plats at City Hall.
So the floor is open for nominations for assistant secretary. I'll nominate Brett Mays.
I'll second that.
Brett?
Sure, that's fine.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Nicole, any other formalities around the elections?
I was just going to repeat it, so we were all clear.
Thank you. Please read it back.
We have Chris Dagenhart as our chairman. Vice chairman will be Dr. Benjamin Whitfield. Secretary will be Uvi Rhodey, and assistant secretary will be Brett Mays.
Thank you all.
Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move into our business, our new business, item number two, rezoning of number 1080 to 1072 West Oakland Avenue. Staff will make a presentation. Whitney, floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome. If we have not met, I am Whitney Hodges, the planning consultant for the city of Johnson City. Today, we are going to look at a proposal on West Oakland Avenue. One day, I will learn how to work, how this mouse works. And where this is located is kind of just down from where it comes in from State of Franklin, adjacent to the reserve. It is a kind of an extension of that with a similar zoning request. They would like to go from B4, which is a planned arterial business, to R5, which is a high-density residential. And the site is about 18.3 acres. Just to kind of give you an idea of what also that looks like and what's around it, just pulling out a little bit, you'll see that there, this is where the reserve is. This, I believe, is something with Charleston in the name, and these are the apartments at Nob Creek. And to give you an idea of what that density is, the RP4 allows up to 15.3 units an acre. R5 is up to 22. Their request is about 15, 15.72 units per acre. And that just kind of gives you an idea of what is around. Their concept plan is included in your packet and shown here. They are providing sidewalks along Oakland up until the creek, because that is where they are stopping, that's what they are purchasing. They will provide a deceleration lane along West Oakland. They have two points of ingress and egress, or entrances and exits, and that is here on West Oakland as well as Chase Drive. The second item, or the second item we're going to talk about is the control strip on Chase Drive. And these are, it'll be 288 units, and so there are 12 three-story buildings throughout here with parking that is appropriate. Their detention will be underground, and they are asking, well, they're providing shade trees and bike racks to reduce some of that parking as well. They provided renderings for us, so we included those as kind of a visual, so you can see what their style and flair are proposed to be. And then, just some photos of the site. This is Chase Drive, we'll see that again, of looking into the site here. This is along Oakland, kind of looking back, and as well as this is along Oakland. And then, just around it, you can see that it is still in a changing character. The future land use map still shows this as business, but you'll notice, or commercial, so but you'll notice that this has changed to residential. So staff is not opposed to this being residential, actually would support it. And there are policies in the bridge plan that we have seen with apartments that also support adding different types of housing around the city. The one thing to, I mean, one of the reasons, I'm going to go back a little bit, and I cannot do that with the mouse. On State of Franklin, up here, you also have, you're in proximity to commercial, so these are places where people can walk. That second entrance on Chase Drive, that's also some place, like, they can get out to that area, too. I think there's a lot of pedestrian-oriented uses along, and I think it starts, that street starts with the name?
Hanover. So Chase Drive will connect into Hanover, is that correct?
Yes, there is a stub there today.
Okay.
And so that will, that will kind of remain. But this kind of gives you a kind of a vicinity of the area of where, that Hammond is, you know, Marketplace, that kind of stuff. A neighborhood, sorry, did you have a question?
There's two points of ingress and egress?
Yes.
Okay.
It's one of the fire codes, that they would need, two points of ingress and egress. A neighborhood meeting was held on August 5th. Wow, the month just flies by. August 5th. And there was some, there was comment taken at the neighborhood meeting, issues about additional traffic, especially on Oakland with not a lot of shoulder that, you know, exists today, and just added density, like, the things that we've heard about added density. So I am available for any questions that you may have. The applicant is also here, their representation is also here.
For that portion of Oakland, is it still considered, is it an arterial?
It's a collector.
Collector? And so that, as far as a collector, will be able to handle that number of trips for 288 units additional?
Yes. In your staff report, there, and I believe that would be, might be, it's on page three, I believe? You'll notice that as far as traffic that's on the road of average, average daily trips, that it's around, it's kind of around 3,000. There was kind of this anomaly year that bumped it up a little bit, but it has kind of stayed in this 3,000 average daily trips.
Okay.
Whitney, you were going to mention something about the neighborhood meeting.
Yes, and I actually will ask Peyton or Preston to speak a little bit more than that. That was one of the meetings I could not come over for. And it will be, I only see Peyton, so it'll be Peyton. Do you want to talk about what was said at the neighborhood meeting? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So at the neighborhood meeting, we had a few public in attendance. I think that some of the main concerns that were initially brought up were issues of stormwater, but we kind of explained how there is an underwater detention, so they are meeting stormwater codes for the city. And then, traffic was also brought up as another issue, and I know that this isn't really quite in the area, but up the road, I believe there is a pinch point that comes underneath a tunnel, and I think that that was also brought up as a potential issue. So those were kind of the bigger concerns at the neighborhood meeting.
All right. I've got a question, Peyton. The underground detention, will that take care of all of the stormwater, or is there going to be some dropped into Nob Creek Road?
I'm not really sure how the stormwater entirely works. That would definitely be a question more for water and sewer, but I do know that it does meet all of the city's codes.
Did we consider the neighboring property not too long ago, right there next to Hanover, like, an office development or something?
It is, it's called Moss Point.
Is that on Chase Drive as well?
It is. They will extend Chase Drive.
From where they stopped?
Yes.
Okay.
And with the control strip, I'll explain that one a little bit more.
Okay. So there is agreement and understanding that the extension across this property is managed with the owner of the property and with the plans for the neighboring property, is that correct?
Yes, we actually had a meeting this week to discuss how that would, how that all would work together.
We'll cover that in another item?
In the, the next item.
The next item. Good, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Do we have anybody here from a department that would know about water drainage?
Travis.
Travis? Water.
Engineering, yeah.
Engineering?
Yeah, I think, Lawrence Perry with Engineering Public Works, I think right now it's just in the concept plan, so they've just shown where the location of the detention would be. So they haven't, we haven't seen any plans or calculations yet so far.
Okay. So that will be covered before we see a final plan?
Final plan, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, right now, it's a concept plan.
It'll be covered in the?
Yeah.
It's covered in the construction plans, and they won't have to bring those back, they're not like, since it's not a subdivision, that won't come back before you guys, but it will be approved through your staff level.
Okay. It'll be inspected during construction?
Correct.
So with the additional units, and I know you've done, staff has done an excellent job in conducting the transportation aspect, did you look at public transportation, too, for possible new stops, added stops?
That is not some, no, we did not think about added stops. I don't, I don't believe that we talked about that at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment. Is anyone here present to speak in favor of the proposal? If you would come forward and give your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Sure. Hi, I'm Marcy Walker. My address is 1602 Millbrook Drive, Johnson City, Tennessee. I'm an attorney at Hunter Smith &amp; Davis Law Firm, and I represent the owners of the property, the developer, TDK, and the real estate company that's been putting this whole deal together. You know, basically, what you've been reported is pretty much it. In regard to traffic, a lot of you weren't on the commission at the time, but back when the reserve was, was built, the owners of that property, which are the owners of this property, donated over three acres to the city of Johnson City and West Oakland so that it can be expanded. There are plans to expand it. It's just a matter of timing, when the city decides that they want to do it. So that's already been taken care of, and that's already been addressed. And in regard to the underground detention basin, that's something else, that it's, it's a lot more expensive to do that than just doing the above-ground detention. They've done it for aesthetic reasons. It's also, it will, it will meet all of the code requirements, so that it will handle, and as I say, I don't have the plans and I'm not an engineer, but I just know that it's something that has been used. It's, it's a way of dealing with the water and not having to have, you know, kind of a hole in the ground with a fence around it.
Right.
So I don't know if you have any questions for me? I was at the neighborhood meeting, we only had three people that attended, and, and as I say, the questions that were probably more important were talking about the one-way tunnel, and, you know, and obviously, that's in the works. It's just a matter of the state funding coming through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor? Please come forward. And state your name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, sir. My name's Perry Rinfleisch, 15 Willow Tree Court, Johnson City, Tennessee. Our property almost backs up to the proposed reason, property for rezoning. And I'm interested in knowing the, the part of the diagram that extends up to the upper-left corner, I noticed that line is along that tree line, does, is that, there's a freshwater spring that goes through there that's very active, and it's very cold water. Where's this property end, and where does that spring go? And incidentally, if you want to know where this all drains, it goes down behind Cheddar's Restaurant. It's where all the stormwater goes.
Okay, sir, here's that, that spring you're talking about, right through here.
What is that dotted line?
It's harder to see where it says unnamed tributary?
Yes.
It goes, it's this little, it's not really, not really dotted.
Does this proper, does your proposal include that stream?
Yeah, yes, through where there is, it is on kind of that, yes.
So this springs inside the property boundary?
It appears so, yes. They will have to cross it with Chase Drive here, and they'll have to provide culverts to cross it.
Well, that's kind of an important question to me, because I'm interested in the adjacent property, and that access to spring water is a valuable asset. And I just need to know if it's included in this rezoning or not.
Access to spring, the branch is included in the, in the rezoning, and this is a commercial development here?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not sure your question.
The spring is included in your rezoning?
Are you talking about the springhead?
No, no, I know where the springhead is on the farm next door.
Yeah. It's right here.
So that dotted line is this stream?
Not this line, this right here is the stream. It's, it's hard for me to say it's dotted, because there's dots down here.
Is the property line, is the stream the property line, or is the property line to the east?
The stream, some of it is in the property line, and some of it is straight.
Okay.
Because around this side here, it follows the stream.
Yes.
Okay. But this side, it goes a little bit in and out, it's a little, it can be in and.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in favor of the proposal? Anyone here to speak against the proposal? Floor is open. Okay, I'll close the public comment without any other comments to be made, and then I ask for discussion amongst the commissioners about the proposal, or any other follow-up questions. I'll move for approval of the rezoning request. So I have a motion for approval? A second?
Second.
Okay. Nicole, call the roll.
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mays?
Yes.
Commissioner Ossenbaum?
Yes.
Commissioner Poblitch?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodey?
Yes.
And Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
Motion is approved as presented.
Thank you. Now, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, the control access strip at Chase Drive, which is related to this piece of property we just heard about. Whitney, the floor is yours.
So to begin, we start with where the access is, and what the, what the vintage would like to do is to be able to use Chase Drive. So this is where it is, and this is where the control strip is located. About, I think it was March or April, you were, controls access came before you for Moss Point, where they were asking for use of this control access for, I believe it's a medical office. They have since come back through and asked to kind of change this around a little bit. I think when you saw it, there was a cul-de-sac here. It now continues all the way to the branch, to the, to the branch of the spring, and would continue on here. And to kind of give you an idea of what that arrangement looks like, everything in red would be a public road. A public road needs to either connect to another public road or terminate, and so they are proposing to terminate in a kind of a T-turnaround. This is just depiction, this is not engineering, so this is just for pictorial, but something of this nature. Then, the private drives would extend in the green and the blue. The creek crossing would be a responsibility of the vintage to cross the tributary, and then everything else would be with the Moss Point development to take that through. I also have one more slide, but it's more of like what that would kind of look like if I pieced them all together in a digital format. They're not all to scale.
Very good job, though, Whitney. Very good job.
And that's, staff would recommend approval of the, to, to access the control strip.
Okay. All right, questions from the floor, or from the commission on to staff? A discussion to staff? I do have a question. If you'd slide back a couple of slides where you showed the color-coded access? That one, yes. So the, what is in red, you're depicting and explaining that that will be city?
Yes, it's a public street.
It will be dedicated to the city?
Yes, and so that will come back for a dedication plot.
Okay, thank you. That'll be in the future.
Correct.
And what's in green and blue would then be private drives?
Yes.
So that would not be, will that be built to city standard?
I believe it's to city wits, but our standards for private drives.
Okay, for private drives.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Which would exclude sidewalks? No, no, there'll be sidewalks.
There'll be sidewalks. And one of the, what, one of the things that's discussed is, and, Lawrence, stop me if I'm wrong, it's a multi-use path to the north of Chase Drive and a side of eight-foot multi-use path to the north of Chase Drive and a five-foot sidewalk on the south side of Chase Drive, which is the standard for, for this type of street.
With a crossing across the driveway on the city portion?
It stops at the, the multi-use path, I believe, stops at the driveway.
So the control strip by the, by the city would not have sidewalks still?
The control strip is back here. The public road, the public road will have a multi-use path here.
All the way to Hanover?
Yes. It doesn't, it doesn't at the moment, but it will.
It will.
Yes.
Just make sure we had connected.
Okay, sorry, yes, and now I see where you're going with that. I thought you meant this way. But yes, all the way to Hanover.
Any other questions of staff?
Fire and police, everybody checked off on. Fire and police, everybody checked off on that as far as widths and all that stuff?
We'll make sure that it meets with fire standards.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, I'll open the floor for public comment. Anyone speaking in favor?
Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Anybody here to speak opposed to the proposal? Okay, I'll close the public comment. How about any discussion amongst the commission? Any questions between us? Question, any additional questions for staff? Hearing none, I'll hear, listen for a motion.
Make a motion. Did we go ahead and approve this?
A second. You got the motion?
I did.
Okay. Any further discussion before we take a vote? Nicole, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mays?
Yes.
Commissioner Oceanbine?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodey?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
Motion approved as presented.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a final plat for Phase Three of the cottages at Cedar Rock subdivision. Will, it looks like you're up.
Good evening, Chairman Dagenhart, Commissioners. This is a final plat approval for the cottage at Cedar Rock, Phase Three. This, the location of this, of this phase of the, of the development is located at the intersection of Hammont Road and North Rome Street. This development's been under construction for a long time, so I'm sure most of all of you are familiar with where this is located. And this phase is outlined in red. In the next presentation, you're going to see a very similar slide. Here is a copy of the final plat. This is a 20-unit PUD development. The zoning is R4. The R4 zoning here would permit a density of 34, 34 units, so well under the permitted units that are allowed. Phase Three preliminary plat approval was approved on July the first of last year and a road, Brooks Court, this road here will be dedicated upon approval of the final plat. When final, when the preliminary plat was approved, there was a variance that was granted to the cross-section for a lane. And they have constructed that in accordance with the modified, with the variance as proposed in this cross-section here. Basically what it did, it maintained the same width of right-of-way. It allowed for them to, they're building a sidewalk on the side of the new street, which is, which butts the property lines of the, of the units. And there's no sidewalk on the other side. So you approved a variance to have a sidewalk on one side of eight feet rather than five feet. And the developer put in a walking trail that snakes around the property. So just a reminder that that was approved. There are no deviations from the preliminary plat. There is a bond that you all need to accept as well that was posted today for unfinished work and the amount of $52,300 developer posted that bond today. So we recommend approval of the final plat and that you accept the $52,300 cash bond for unfinished work.
The staff recommends approval?
Yes, staff recommends approval of the final plat and for you to accept the bond.
All right, questions for staff? I have a question. Is, is there an allowance in the bond for repairing the surface of the ground on the opposite side of the road that where the sidewalk is not?
Over here.
There's a, there's a real raw bank where they've cut out the backyards of the adjacent properties?
Here's an itemized description of the bond. Their as-built plans, sidewalk, truncated domes, street and traffic signs, temporary erosion control, furnished and spread topsoil, seating with mulch, subtotal. And I'm sure we can, you have a public hearing, so the developer's here, he can speak to that. But, so I was not aware of the damaged ground on the other side.
Well, I'm not sure exactly where it lies in terms of the adjacent property.
It's handled on, engineering said that it's handled under the temporary erosion control.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, I'll open the public, the floor for public comment. Anyone here speaking in favor of the final plat? Anyone here to speak against the final plat? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Now, any discussion amongst the commissioners about the proposal before we take a vote?
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat and accept the bond for $52,300 for finished work.
All right, thank you. You second?
Second.
Was that finished or unfinished? Was the work finished or unfinished?
It's for unfinished work.
For unfinished work.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. I'll, Nicole, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mays?
Yes.
Commissioner Oceanbine?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodey?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
Motion approved with the addition of the $52,300 cash bond.
Thank you very much, Nicole. All right, Mr. Rider, we've got a Phase Four.
All right, we are right across the street here. As promised, here's the similar slide with the, this is this portion of the Cedar Rock development. It's also 20 units. The acreage of this property would allow for 27 with the R4 zoning. Phase, actually, I should read Phase Four. But Phase Four, the preliminary plat was approved the same day as the Phase Three, July the 21st, 2020. And there is no bond for this plat. This is a shared private drive. There's no unfinished work that needs to be bonded and we're recommending approval of the final plat. No major, no deviations from the preliminary plat that was approved last year.
Okay, thank you, Will.
Yes, sir.
Questions for staff?
This is a separate planned unit development from the other portions of Cedar Rock. Is that correct?
It's, it's a separate phase of that development, but it's a, it's a, it's a portion of that development, if I'm understanding your question correctly.
I guess I'm, will it have its own, I assume it'll have its own master deed and its own common, well, HOA or, you know, COA, whatever, the townhome, HOA, whatever it is that these are going to be. I assume it'll have its own little group that owns that private drive.
I know that the HOA, however, the HOAs are drawn up between the phases of the developments. That's, I'm, that's.
I mean, it's a private, it's outside of y'all's.
But it's, there's a note on the plat indicating that the, that the private drive will be maintained by the homeowners association.
Okay. That's what I was.
It will have an HOA.
Okay, yeah, right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or any other discussion? Okay, I'm listening for a motion.
Make a motion. Go ahead.
Public comment. Oh, did we not have, oops, sorry. I'll open the floor for public hearing. I apologize. Anybody here to speak in favor?
We are here to ask any questions if there are needed.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the developers? Thank you for coming. Anybody here to speak against? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. All right, any discussion on the floor for the commission? Listening for a motion? I'll move approval. I have a motion for approval, second by Commissioner Hickson. Okay, Nicole, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mays?
Yes.
Commissioner Oceanbine?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodey?
Yes.
And Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is the final plan in Washington County of a 21, approximately 21-acre property partition named Sandgarden.
The owner of this property is Brian Sandgarden. Here's the location. The plat says Watauga River. The map says Boone Lake. I believe it's Watauga River. I believe you would concur with that, would you not, sir?
Yeah.
I remember that from the last meeting because.
He'll tell you it's the river.
Because, and I wanted to clarify that, because this is in proximity to the rezoning that you all heard last month over here that was right across from the. I know this is, this is zoomed way out, but this is South Austin Springs Road. We have Wing Deer Park over here. And this parcel is located roughly where this box is. 21, 21, just over 21 acres. All the property is in Washington County, so we discussed at the orientation, this is one of those subdivisions that's in the county, but it's within our planning region. So the Johnson City Regional Planning Commission has authority over these types of county subdivisions. It's a 12-lot subdivision for potential single-family development. Most all of the lots with access to the Watauga River. It meets all of the county zoning requirements, which, public water is available to this property. Sewer is not. It'll be on septic. And the county for a lot in the A1 is a, it's a half-acre minimum with, for a lot that has public water and private sewer with a lot width of 100 feet at the building line for single-family. As stated, it meets the county zoning requirements. They are requesting a variance to section. And this is a type or mistake, which I make from time to time in the staff report. I think that I put the section was 4-4.2.4. It's actually 4-4.2.5. They're requesting a variance of the Johnson City subregs required for this particular lot, Lot Nine, which we'll get into in a moment. And I put this on, this is page one of the plat. This is, it's mentioned city sewer is not available. This is the T-Deck stamp indicating that they conducted all the soil tests and that the lot perks, and so they have stamped this. For some of you, you may remember, we had this issue a couple of months ago with this particular section of the subregs for any lot less than 170 feet in width, which in this case, that's only Lot Nine, and the rest of them are over 170 feet in width. The width shall not have a depth more than three times, it's, shall not have a depth more than three times its, the length shall not have a depth of more than three times its width. It looks like I made another mistake. So the purpose of the three-to-one lot width ratio, width-to-length ratio is to avoid long, narrow lots. You could see there were long, narrow lots, but for a specific purpose, in order to promote the construction of streets to increase the accessibility, particularly in the city, particularly in the city, and to minimize the waste of usable land. We would recommend approval of this variance for several reasons. It's outside the city limits. It's not part of a major subdivision development like we saw with Cedar Rock in the previous two plats. There's no need for the construction of new streets to promote accessibility between the lots. And the applicant actually had originally submitted a plan that had, there was a 14-lot subdivision. And, you know, generally, people don't try to cut the number of lots that they can sell. In this case, they cut it from 14 to 12 on a recommendation from T-Deck to ensure that the soil on each lot would perk. And so Lot Nine perks enough for the construction of a three-bedroom, bedroom, single-family home. So we would recommend approval of the variance request to Section 4-4.2.5 of the subdivision regulations for Lot Nine. There's no need to, if you are in favor of approving that variance, there's no need to state the specific length because it will be based on the plat, which is, of course, annotated on the plat. And we would recommend approval of the final plat.
Thank you, Mr. Rider.
Yes, sir.
Questions for staff?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
The semi-dashed line going through the middle of the property, is that the floodplain or floodway?
That is the floodplain. This over here, I believe, is lot, that's Zone A and this is Zone X. So everything here is in the floodplain and everything here is not. That doesn't mean that, it's not, not the floodway, so they could still possibly build here. And, but all building permits will be handled by the county. And it does back up to the river, so I'll just say it's really not particular to the discussion tonight with plating, but anything below the 1390 elevation line would require for the purposes of like building docks and that sort of thing would be handled by the TVA. The 1390 line runs roughly along here. But again, if they're to build docks, they'll have to go to be TVA. And if they build houses, they'll have to go to the county. This is just approval of the subdivision.
I think the 1390 line is quite a bit down on there.
The, I did not print it out on the here because it was, it was quite faint, but from just, it was roughly here when I pulled up the contours. It was, it started roughly along here and then it kind of, our contour map, it kind of ended. And the contours stopped here. So can't explain that, but I know the 1390 line's there and they'll have to go to the TVA if they want to build docks. But that's really not pertinent to discussion for the final plat.
Will, did you say?
And I'm not saying that it's not necessarily, I just, that was the, where we saw it on.
The 1392 is on a head wall on our property, so I know that's not 1390.
Did you say that they will have city electric?
They will have city water and they will have private sewer. I did not speak to the electric.
Okay.
And usually not something that we do speak to on the, on the plats. I imagine Bright Ridge is the provider.
Additional questions for staff?
So are we advising the county or, I'm sorry, are we advising the county or are we?
You're it. You're it. You're the approval for county subdivisions in our, in our planning region. Buck stops with you.
Any questions, additional questions for staff?
So do we have to include the variance in the motion?
Yes, sir. I would, you could frame your motion as recommend approval of the final plat and, and approval of the variance request to.
Lot Nine is where the old house is.
Hey, UV, could you speak a little louder into the mic, please?
Lot Nine, Lot Nine is where the old house is, the old farmhouse. So is that the reason for the variance?
Lot Nine is down here, so if I'm estimating about where that, I would say that Lot Nine falls right around in here somewhere. So these houses are down here. A little ways away from Lot Nine. Yeah, okay.
All right, any other questions for staff? Now I'll open the floor for a public hearing. Anyone here to speak in favor of the proposal? Hearing no one. Anybody here to speak against the proposal?
Will, I do have a question, I'm sorry.
Okay, not having anyone stepping forward to make public comment, I'm going to close the floor. All right, additional conversation or discussion amongst the commissioners or any other questions for staff?
I have one other question. In terms of the three-to-one ratio and the, and the variance request, what, was there some sort of hardship because of geography or what is? Or what is the rationale for the request of that variance?
Well, one, T-deck recommended it. T-deck recommended that they create the lot in that manner to increase their chances for a perk. They have decreased the number of lots to make it from, from 14 to 12. And the 14 lots that they had proposed, they had actually, none of them would have needed the variance. But it was, and I did not bring that original plan here, but the layout of the lots themselves, this is a lot better than what we saw on the other lot. There were actually, there were actually more flag lots and that sort of thing. Several that were stacked coming back from the road over here, back this way. The, the owner would like to have as many properties as possible front the lake. And to be able to do that, they needed to, they needed to have the longer shaped lots. In this particular case, this lot didn't quite meet it. But I don't think, I don't think the creation of this is counter to any, any of the ideas that were behind in, in the creation of this regulation. Thank you.
Yeah, as a comment, since it's my neighborhood, I think it's a nice, low-density subdivision. It's very appropriate for county subdivisions. I particularly like the requirement of not backing into the street because both of those roads, Hub Hodge Road and Watauga Flats Road are heavy traffic now. So anytime we can do that, I think that's important.
Any other discussion amongst the commissioners? Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the approval of the variance request to Section 4-4.2-5 of the subdivision regulation for Lot 9 and an approval of the final plat for the Sandgarden property partition final plat.
Well said.
I second.
Seconded by Uve.
You could pay by the word.
Rhodey?
I'll second it.
I think Uve got in front of you. I think Uve got in front of you, he seconded it. Thank you. Nicole, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aldridge.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Hickson.
Yes.
Commissioner Mays.
Yes.
Commissioner Ocean Vine.
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich.
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodey.
Yes.
And Chairman Dagenhart.
Yes.
Motion approved with the variance request.
Thank you very much. Now for our number seven, a preliminary plat amendment on Chestnut Cove subdivision, phases one and two. Looks like Department Head Mitchell's going to present. Thank you.
Yes, if you would, just bear with me one second, I need to move something here. Only because I was making some last minute changes and. Thank you, commissioners. First of all, on, on behalf of the Planning Department, I want to, I want to first of all, welcome our, our two new members. Very excited about you all joining. Thank you for your willingness to do this. This is a very important board and as are all of our boards and commissions. But as you know, during our orientation, this board advises the city commission on a regular basis. And so, so your, your work is, is precious. And so we, we appreciate your time. And after that, want to congratulate the new chair and vice chair and the secretary and vice secretary. So we're off on an exciting year here. So thank you all very much for your time. This is a little bit of a, of a unique request in that it's going to sound a little funny coming from a planner, from the planning department, the, our, our support for this particular type of request. But I want to point out something that, that throughout tonight's agenda, there's been a thread. And that thread is street cross-section design and sidewalks and, and context-sensitive solutions. We've been engaging in, in a number of very lengthy and detailed conversations with our engineering department, as well as with our fire department regarding the street cross-section designs in the subregs. And we're going to have a more in-depth conversation at the committee level. That's what Whitney's going to be bringing to you, that was the addendum. But it is time that we make some changes to the subdivision regulations as it relates to street cross-sections. The, the, from a residential perspective, now I'm, I'm going to leave the, the commercial streets over here to the side for just a minute. But from a residential perspective, we are just simply finding that, that one size does not fit all. And I think all of you know that. But as you spend time on the board and you hear us present cases to you for subdivisions, for final plats, for preliminary plats, oftentimes you are hearing exceptions to the cross-sections. Oftentimes you are hearing requests for exceptions to sidewalks in certain circumstances. And so anytime you, you begin to, that conversation becomes more regular, you really need to step back and look at it from a policy perspective. You know, you know, how do we need to handle this moving forward? Do we need to simply, well, I shouldn't say simply, but is it best suited to amend our regulations, amend our standards to allow for some flexibility? And, and as opposed to constantly coming to you with, with new requests? Or I should say with, with requests to amend. And so I, again, I'm going to leave it up to Ms. Hodges to get into more of the detail. She's not going to get into too much detail tonight about the addendum, but for the committee. But she, she is an expert, considered an expert in context-sensitive solutions and context-sensitive design. And so she's bringing tremendous wealth of experience in this realm, in those conversations to engineering. So that's been, that's been great. What the developers with Chestnut Cove subdivision are asking is, it's, it's a big ask, but I'm going to unpack it here for you. Section 4-3.1 of the subregs requires sidewalks on all new public streets. I think we all know that, except for maybe Sean and Rowena, Rowena, pardon me. Everybody's heard that before. Except that a deviation to those standards may be granted under certain, certain circumstances or when a viable alternative is proposed. Now, I wrote the last sentence because it was in your staff report, this is just a screenshot from the staff report. But in this particular case, an alternative is proposed that more than meets the intent of the anticipated alternatives. And that's, that's, that's staff's suggestion to you, is that what is being proposed more than meets the intent of that, of that section. As you know, Chestnut Cove has come to you in two phases. Phase one, which is this area right here off of Boone Station Road. And then this dark bold, this bold black line right here is the phase line. Phase one has estate-sized lots, larger lots here on the Spine Road, which is called Brummitt Fields. And then they are constructing a series of patio homes along Gardenia Drive. And then phase two continues the estate lots down the Spine Road all the way to what will become a newly constructed intersection at Highland Church Road and Haretown Road. So if you're out there now, ever at Haretown and Highland Church, it makes a, makes a diamond right now. And you can see this is, this is the, the current roadway that, that it kind of swoops out like this and then comes back in as you go down this hill. And so what's going to happen is the developers have actually dedicated quite a lot of, quite a bit of land for right-of-way off of their property. And we are essentially sucking or tucking the road up right next to their property line. So Haretown Road will come up into a nice, neat four-way intersection here. And phase two, in addition to the Spine Road, has three cul-de-sacs that come off of it. And these three cul-de-sacs are not necessarily the exact same product that's being provided on Gardenia, but maybe similar product. Their ask is really three, there are really three points to their ask. One is to allow a trail that is already under construction, a concrete trail that is already under construction, to be constructed along the entire perimeter of the development, all the way here from Boone Station Road, around the southern perimeter, and then reaching back over here to where Highland Church Road will be reconstructed and then tied back in to where Brummitt Fields meets Highland Church Road. And you can see here, the engineer added a note here, proposed five-foot concrete walking trail. You can see there, it's about 4,500 linear feet, so almost a mile of concrete walking trail. The second request, and so that, that concrete walking trail act as a viable alternative to some of the sidewalks that would be normally required in the subdivision. So where they're asking that the sidewalks be removed is along the north end of Gardenia Drive. And we're going to look at why here in just a minute. And then also off of both sides of Tanner Court, Tanner's Court or Cove and Winston Place. These two cul-de-sacs right here. But in addition to removing the sidewalks from those two cul-de-sacs, amending the cross-section, the street cross-section itself to a cross-section that falls in between what is a local road and a lane. And I'm going to show that here in just a minute. So those are the three requests, that the trail act as a viable alternative to the sidewalks that are, that would normally be required along the north side of Gardenia Drive and then on both sides of these two short cul-de-sacs. That the cul-de-sacs be allowed to not have the sidewalks and that the cross-section be allowed to change. So let's dive into that just a little bit deeper here. Here are some photographs of the trail. This was as of about, I think, a week ago, maybe or so, Peyton. We were out there shooting a number of photos of the, of the entire development. And this is, if I was to go back a slide, this is this point right here where the sidewalk system makes an L and then starts to head up the hill here, right off of Boone Station Road. So we had our little city car parked right here. And that's this. So you can see here that there is a continuous uninterrupted section of the trail that ties into the sidewalk. And then that continues along the back of the development. You can see here, these are the homes that have already begun to be under construction there along Gardenia Drive. And then it comes down, now I'm beginning to get onto the southern edge there of the property. And we're coming down to the stormwater device, which is here on my left. And you can see that the concrete trail is already under construction and terminates there only temporarily, and it will continue on down. So let's break this down into the two phases. The number one reason why they need to request the exception from the sidewalk along the north side is because of grading. As they've come in and graded this site, first of all, many of you may know that the process works in this way. Preliminary plat comes in where the developer proposes X number of lots. And the street layout might look somewhat like this, but they've yet to get into engineering. If you all approve the preliminary plat, that gives them the green light to go and hire the engineers because that's really expensive to go and get the civil set put together. After the civil set gets approved, that's when they start building. And, or start doing horizontal construction, and then they get the final plat, then they can start building homes. So they came in, got their preliminary plat, preliminary plat got approved. And then they went and started doing their engineering, got their engineering set approved, but realized that, that, and this was not an error, it was just simply how it worked out, kind of from the grading perspective and how the land, the lay of the land, that as they came in and cut out Gardenia Drive and were beginning to cut out where these lots were, there was a little too much slope between Gardenia Drive and these lots on the north side. Too much change in elevation, I should say. And so if the sidewalk was to go in, it could potentially create a situation for the driveways that looks something like that. Now, that's extreme. That's, that's an image that is shared with planners all the time. But essentially, in a less extreme version of that, that's a lot of what you would have happen. And so when the sidewalk goes in and then you have to shoot straight up to the house. In, in a situation like this, the sidewalk would be removed and there would be a much smoother transition of the driveway up to the home. Now again, this is not Gardenia Drive, but this is an example of where this type of thing could have been avoided. While we're here, I want to point out that, and I'm going to point this out on phase two, that you'll note, except for many of the lots along Brummitt Fields, that virtually, well, I should say, most all of the lots along Gardenia Drive, as well as along the other two cul-de-sacs in phases one and two, already have sidewalk either at their front door or their back door. So I do realize that these lots here on the north side would not have a sidewalk. However, when you go back and look at the entire subdivision blown out, there are very few sidewalks, and in fact, I believe I gave you those figures, very few sidewalks that would not have a sidewalk either at their front line or at their rear line because of the trail. So let's take a look at phase two and those two particular cul-de-sacs.
Before you go on, the dotted red line represents a sidewalk?
Right, dotted red line.
Can you go back one slide then?
Sure.
Okay, so there's just not a sidewalk on the north side.
Just on the north side.
But there is on the southern side of Gardenia.
Correct. So you would have a sidewalk, and it's already there. You would have a sidewalk on the entire southern side. These, all of these lots you'll see here will have sidewalk on both sides of them, all the way down to 10. And then you'll see that there is sidewalk on both sides of Brummitt Fields. So everywhere that there is a red line, there is a sidewalk. That's a great question, thank you.
So you have no concerns about connectivity for access to that because of the way they're constructing it, correct?
That was an, that was an absolutely critical part of our conversation was when the developer came forward and said, this is something we're asking for. We said, if you're going to propose this and if staff is going to support this, your trail needs to be seamless with the public sidewalk system. And they're already doing concrete on the trail as it is. And so what they have done is proposed three concrete access points to the, to the trail. There are two right here in phase one. And then there is one right here in phase two. But again, those must be concrete and those must be seamless. Must be seamless transition from the public system into the trail.
Thanks, sir.
And so, again, kind of deep diving in here in, into phase two, the request is to remove the sidewalks for these two short cul-de-sacs and then to modify the cross-section to keep it at 40 feet in width, but to widen the pavement to 24 feet. So I'm going to touch on this for just a minute here on the next slide. Our road classifications, and we've gotten into this a lot with Brown's Mill and with several other conversations. But going down this list in, in order of hierarchy, your arterial, now obviously you've got highways and interstates above that. But at the, at the surface level, you've got arterials are your busiest roads, those are your State of Franklin's, things like that. Down to collectors, feeders, locals, lanes and alleys. And so what they're asking to do in those two cul-de-sacs is to really do a combination of a local street and a lane. Because you can see here that a lane is 40 feet of right-of-way, but only has 19 feet of pavement in our current standard with the sidewalks on both sides and then the curb and gutter. The local street is 50 feet of right-of-way with 21 to 25 feet of pavement, and again, with the sidewalks on both sides. But we're finding that in a situation where, especially in a cul-de-sac, and really I should say only in a cul-de-sac. and really I should say only in a cul-de-sac, especially if they are short enough, that it's not inappropriate, it's not bad design, to allow for a wider pavement, up to 24 feet like they are asking, to allow for a shared environment between the vehicles and the pedestrians, and remove those sidewalks. What we have found, and we'll get into this at the committee level, is that there's a subdivision, in fact, Mr. Ryder was talking about one of them tonight, was one of the phases of Cedar Rock, and this is, and before I go down this path, I want to make clear, this is not the fault of the developer in any way, shape, or form. This is our design. This is, these are our standards. That one of the roads came in with 19 feet of pavement, 40 feet of right-of-way, and we're having awful parking issues out there and access issues coming out of driveways. And so that's, that's something we need to address. And so how can we blend these two? How can we find a more context-sensitive solution? And so that's what we're working on here. So to kind of wrap this up, and I realize that I've taken some time here, but I think it's important to kind of take all this in, because this is a big ask. And so what I've done is Peyton and I went out this afternoon and shot a little video here, and it's only about three minutes long, but it takes you into the city and gives you some context. What I start with, is I start with showing you kind of what a collector feels like. And I'm glad there was, there was a pretty good amount of traffic on the road, because you really get a feel for what a collector feels like. And then I take you up to Hickory Court, which is the road that I gave you in your backup material that would match the cul-de-sac in Chestnut Cove if you approve them that way, 40 feet of right-of-way with 24 feet of pavement. So let's take a look at this just real quick, and I want to make sure there's some volume on this little sucker. This is an example of a collector. This is Broadway. And a collector may only have two lanes, but it may also have three lanes, and I'll show you another example of a multi-lane cross-section. Typically, a collector, as we've discussed with Brown's Mill, will have lanes that are either 11 or 12 feet wide. And it's essential that in a collector-type situation that has more vehicles, that you have sidewalks along those sides. Now, here's an example along Broadway, where at some point in the future, the city should come in and install sidewalks on the other side. It's important that you have the pedestrians separated from the vehicular lanes on a collector, just like you would on an arterial. Again, the collector may be two lanes, but it may also be three lanes. And so here you can see where Broadway actually transitions from two lanes to multi-lane as you get past Watauga and Udaka. This road right here is Woodmont Drive, which is, its technical classification is that of a local road. Public Works or Engineering may define this as a feeder. It's not as high as a collector, but it grabs and pulls traffic out of the smaller residential or local routes within the Oak Park subdivision, and feeds them up to and dumps them out onto Oakland, which is another collector. Oakland and Broadway are parallel collectors. This local road is roughly 26 feet wide, and it ties into Hickory Court, which is the example I gave to you in your backup material. So Peyton and I are going to walk up Hickory Cove here, and the point I want to show is that in a situation like this with Hickory Cove, it can be a very comfortable and safe environment for both pedestrians and vehicles in a dead end or a, or a Cove-type situation like this. Okay, so Peyton and I have come up here on the top of Hickory Court, and the example I want to give is what was provided to you in your backup material, is that the right-of-way width and the pavement width of Hickory Court is identical to what's being proposed as part of the preliminary plat amendment for Chestnut Cove, for, for Roads B and C. The point that's being made here is that this is a very comfortable space for us standing in the street, as well as for children. Obviously, you can see here, these folks had no idea that we were coming up on this. There's a, there's a basketball goal in the street. So this is a comfortable space for anyone who wants to walk in this space, ride a bike in this space, a skateboard. It's not that sidewalks are a bad idea, they're just not necessary in this type of environment. Again, there's enough width here with 24 feet of pavement that vehicles can park safely, you can still have other vehicles, both large and small, get by, and then at the same time, still share the space with pedestrians or children or cyclists. So that's that, and I'll leave it minimized if anybody wants to be repulsed any further. But I'll go back to the main slide there, and that is, again, everything in red is proposed to be either a public sidewalk or the, the viable alternative, and that being the concrete trail. So again, the request is three-part, to remove the sidewalk off the north side of Gardenia Drive, remove it off of both of the cul-de-sacs, and then amend the cul-de-sac cross-section. And so to kind of circle all the way back to my opening comments about, you know, why we need to have these conversations with engineering, and then ultimately bring some changes to the subdivision regulations to you, is it context-sensitive design. But we also feel very comfortable that even though we have an existing situation in town, we believe that this will be a very good test case. And we feel very comfortable that those two cul-de-sacs will be very safe and comfortable areas, especially with that width of pavement, and with the, with the alternative that has been proposed. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. All right, questions for staff?
Yeah, I had one question, Preston. What are you doing in terms of maintenance and ownership? Is that part of the HOA requirements to maintain those trails?
It will be. It will be part of...
So they're not defined on public land?
I'm sorry?
They're not defined as public land.
They, no, they are not defined as public land. They will need to have easements, because you can see that, that some, that for example, back, well, back in here, and then also back in, starting at this point, going back this way, they run along the rear of those property boundaries. And so there will need to be permanent access easements so that people don't put fences across them.
I'm just concerned about the long-term maintenance. You know, the city protects our sidewalks now. If you get these trails, and they come in disrepair for whatever reason, who repairs them? And how is that enforced?
The, I was, I was, in fact, I was somewhat pushy. I asked the developer, I said, if you're going to ask for this, I really need you all here to speak on your behalf. And so they are here. They're, the developers are here and should be able to speak on their behalf as to maintenance and how they will build that into their HOA documents, all of that. But I think it, it does help, and it certainly speaks to their level of investment and their level of intent behind this by the fact that they are doing concrete. We have run into situations where other trails that have been built are either gravel or pine bark, other things like that. And you're right, they just end up being maintenance nightmares. But because this is built essentially to the same standard as a public sidewalk, I think that the longevity will be much higher.
So if we, are you asking for an approval tonight on this?
Yes.
Okay. So if we approve this tonight, does this then become an either-or for, in our subdivision regs?
No, not for the subregs. What I'm, what I'm pointing out is that this is a big ask, but we believe that this is a situation where this, those two, those two cul-de-sacs can operate as a test case. But, you know, honestly, I think that the test case already exists with Hickory Court. I mean, I physically took you out there tonight, if, if any of you didn't by chance already go. And, but the bigger conversation about the subdivision regulation amendments will come, and that's what Ms. Hodges is going to be presenting to you tonight. The point I was trying to make is that there's a thread, and there's, there's been a thread through many of our cases over the last several meetings about cross-sections, and it's something we need to address.
Preston, you don't think this is, this would start something to where future developments and stuff would bypass the sidewalks to have the wider roads?
They may, but that's, I think, where we're going, is that there will be circumstances. For example, you can see there on, I can't read that name right there, but you can see this particular cul-de-sac right here is simply too long that we would not support, and in fact, it was asked, but we did not and would not support removal of the sidewalks on one that exceeds a certain number of feet. And, and in fact, they have gone ahead and gone above and beyond by installing the sidewalk around the bulb. In fact, there's already a standard in our subregs that says that the sidewalk's allowed to terminate at the base of the bulb. So they've gone ahead and made it continuous. But in a situation like this, yes, we would recommend sidewalks on both sides, or at a minimum on one. But when you get into these shorter situations, like you find along Hickory Court, or like you find in these, that are 400, 500, 600 feet long, which is essentially a city block, that, that's a safe, shared space.
Additional questions of staff?
I have a question, Preston, please.
Sure.
At the intersection on the far left, in the orange circle, there is a sidewalk that goes across that one lot that's beside the street entrance, and then it stops. Do you see what I'm talking about?
Oh, right here.
What's, what's at the end of that step?
Well, no, their, their sidewalk will, I'm sorry if, if I didn't show it. It will have to continue, it will have to continue up until the point where their, where their street construction, the reconstruction terminates.
Okay, so it's not correctly represented on the image?
You mean as far as the cross?
Very slightly, but...
Okay, so it will go further than it's...
Right. Not a lot further, but, but just slightly.
As far as the improvement to Hare Town?
Correct. Right.
Thank you, thank you.
Is that going to be a four-way stop right there at that intersection?
It is.
A four-way stop?
Well, no, I don't know if it'll be signalized. I didn't...
It's going to be four ways, or, yeah, I think it's going to be stop control. No light.
No light.
Mr. Mitchell, is there examples in other cities of them having certain distances to cul-de-sacs with not putting sidewalks in?
There are, and, you know, we'd be happy to, to, you know, well, not we'd be happy to. We were fully planning on having that a part of our conversation at the committee level. But yes, generally, it is, it is, it is acceptable and comfortable for that to be about a, a block length. And again, a block. Now, urban blocks are different than suburban blocks. A typical urban block in a downtown environment's roughly 350, 400 feet. And a suburban block, it's, sometimes feels a little bit bigger, so it can be anywhere from 600 to about 750. And so those two examples right there are roughly around 600 feet, I believe. So it falls within what would be acceptable, but that's certainly something we can talk about as we get into the committee.
Well, I kind of like your approach to where you made a stand to have the connectivity with the sidewalks. And from a development standpoint, I would almost like to see that in their subdivision regs, as in either or.
Sure.
I think it's, I really like the idea about, especially if the lot, you know, obviously the lots beside it may also develop in residential, and have that connectivity between lot or neighborhood to neighborhood, just through sidewalks would be nice.
Yeah, now, you raise a very good point, Commissioner. That is, and I've, I've had several people ask about, you know, why do we have three cul-de-sacs right here when we have a connectivity requirement in the ordinance? Well, the connectivity requirement in the ordinance speaks to available, or lands that are adjoining and available for development, or readily available for development. And so this, all of these properties here are developed. Yes, this one's large, but there's a, someone's home on that. And then this lot right here is, and I'm blanking out on the family name right now, but has, has extreme topography to it. And so it will be, it will be, it will be a, quite some time before the market demands that that land be developed. There, you know, market's going to respond to what's available, and there, there are severe topographic issues with that land.
Preston, I'd like to go back to Timbers' comment. Are we going down a slippery slope here, and not having any guidelines in place? What if somebody, another contractor comes by and wants to do this immediately, before it's handled in committee?
Well, so keep in mind that the standards, if, if you were to approve this tonight, the standards in the subregs don't change. They do not change. And I'm glad that you're bringing that up, because, because I think that was also asked by Mr. Pavlich. If this was approved tonight, the standards in the subregs do not change. And also, keep in mind, those of you who have been on the board for some time have heard me preach this before, and that is, each decision you make is independent of all other decisions. We have Mr. Mays, who is a very competent attorney on the board. He, I'm not going to put him on the spot, but I've heard him agree with me several times during Zoom meetings in the past, that court decisions, his world, there is precedence in the courtrooms. There is no precedence for the Planning Commission or for the City Commission when it comes to these land use decisions. These land use decisions are independent of each other. Now, oftentimes, you may find yourself in a situation where just you feel as a person, I voted for this over here, I should vote for this over here. But that's just an, that's an internal struggle. But you have no legal obligation to vote this same way on another project. And it goes back to the point I was making about Whitney's expertise, and the conversation we want to have with you all and with engineering about the cross-sections in the future is, is context-sensitive solutions. We've got to find context-sensitive solutions and allow for some alternatives built into the subregs for these developers, that, that still provide safe environments, still provide sidewalks, but allow for some flexibility in the regulations.
So we, are we essentially, if we approve this, granting an exception?
You'd be, you're granting a subdivision reg exception. All right, yes, that's another great question. This board, you're not granting any kind of variance to the zoning code. Any variances to the zoning code would have to go to the BZA. So you're, you're granting an exception from the document you approve and you write, and that is the subregs.
It's not any different than what we just did with Lot 9 on the one that we'll approve, because, and I think, just to this comment on flexibility, I think there's a value to flexibility, because we live in a place where we cannot have cookie cutter solutions, because we don't live on cookie cutter pieces of land here in East Tennessee. And so every piece of property that's developed has its own unique circumstances and characteristics that have to be taken into account. But to the point that was made earlier, the flex, I mean, I think the flexibility is important from a, I guess, a Planning Commission comment, but from a legal standpoint, each time something comes before us, we consider it on an individual, per circumstances basis. So there, there's no, I think a lot of times in municipal law, people are worried about boxing themselves in, into a decision. And that, that fear, I think, is misplaced, because we are considering things on an individual, case-by-case basis, because of the reasons we're talking about, topography, grading issues, whatever the case may be. So...
So for your legalese, so when we make a motion, do we need to have some sort of supportive nomenclature to, to back up our decision?
No, I don't think so. I mean, we've talked about the rationale of why the variance may be appropriate in this context, and I think that comes into each commissioner's vote tonight. But as far as whether we have the authority to do that, we do have the authority to do that under state law and the zoning, or the subdivision regs, so...
That's always been my big concern. Thanks for clearing that up.
Let's make sure we have no more questions for staff. Anymore?
And if you do, I'm here.
All right, I'm going to open the floor for public comment. Is anyone here to speak in favor of the proposal, sir? If you'll just give your name and address, please, for the record?
I'm Ron Gage.
Yes, you're welcome to.
I'm Ron Gage. Live at 1590 Prophets Way in Great Tennessee. We, we want this to be the next Highland Ridge. I don't know if you all are familiar with Highland Ridge. It's one of the premier developments in this, and we did, we did Highland Ridge. So, and I don't know, this is before Preston's time. Even then, we added two miles of walking trail, contract, concrete walking Even then, we added two miles of walking trail, contract, concrete walking trails in place of two sidewalks. That was done with a variance in 2007. So this is not the first time. We want this property to be the best it can be. That's, that's what we want, and, and this will make it better. The walking trail is the, it's just what the community desires, and, and this is going to be a fantastic walking trail. And, you know, just like the, I think that's Winston's place there or something, it's got a sidewalk, the walking trail's on the backside of that lot, and it's got a walking, see, those are sidewalk, so those have walking on the back and front, on each back of those. So, so there are very few lots that don't have it. What we get into is, you know, like Mr. Mays said, all this works great on a flat piece of paper, but we're in East Tennessee, and, you know, it's, it's pretty difficult to do these things. And when you've got a slope up, when you've got a seven-foot separation from the sidewalk, from the, from the curb to where the sidewalk starts, it's like that picture, you're going back 12 feet before you can start elevating your driveway. So those, on that one street, those are patio homes for, most of them would be 60 and older. And so, you know, you start a slope driveway, and also, I don't know if Preston, when, when you've got a 25-foot setback for the garage, most of the time on that sidewalk, when you've got it that far off the street, cars are going to be parked there, so you might have to go around them anyhow. But this will be the next Highland Ridge, and it, we're not trying to save money, we're, we're adding cost to it. We're, we're wanting to make it better. That's what we want to do, so. We appreciate your attention, and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone speaking against the proposal? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any other discussion amongst the commissioners? Or questions?
I think Preston explained the bid against pretty clearly, the viable alternative to sidewalks with the walking trail, and the fact that there's a relative low or a short linear distance to the two cul-de-sacs in question, so I appreciate staff's input and applicants being here tonight.
Any other comments or questions or discussion? I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll move for approval as, with the requested change to the preliminary plat. Is that correct?
Yep.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pavlich. Nicole, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mays?
Yes.
Commissioner Oceanbine?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodey?
Yes.
And Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, would the commission like to take a five-minute break?
It'd be great.
Yes, I'm going to call a five-minute break, please.
Whitney, you've got an introduction to a topic for a subcommittee meeting?
I feel as though you've got a good introduction to part of it in the last, in the, in the last case. Essentially, what planning staff would like to do is to ask that a, that the street sections be taken to the Land Use and Legislative Committee, which could meet on September 1st. I believe it's at 5:00 PM, and that's a Wednesday, it's your standing meeting. What we would like to do is, we have been talking with engineering and Public Works, we have been talking with FIRE about some of our smaller streets, and how some of the issues that arise with smaller streets. Mr. Mitchell talked some about, like, how the parking, and even, I believe, Mr. Gooch, about how sometimes the parking does become an issue with smaller streets and driveway spacings, and so to give that some further study, because these are, as developments, and they will occur more and more often, come into the city, these are our, they're like our resources. So we want to make sure that what is being proposed is something that, that we can, that will last a long time, and that will be something that the residents who live there, because those will be the people who will get calls from, or who just use, use these assets, that they're, that's something that they can live with and enjoy. I do have an example from one of, and I'm just going to show it quickly, but if you had a, if you have a, okay. See the car where the 19 is? Imagine that that is a parked car. To get out of a driveway with a, with an SUV, you're coming in with some prob, with some problems. So essentially, one of the things that we're looking at is, you know, trying to design around what we know. And so what we would like is to be able to have some time to do some studies around the city and to bring that to a committee.
Very good. So that committee meeting will be September 1st?
Yes.
And for the sake of the commissioners, we'll be working out a plan for assignments to specific committees. We have two, this is one of the two committees that we have. So we'll be back in touch with the commissioners to make sure that we have clarity on who's in what committee.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Because I don't know right off.
We don't have that yet.
No.
Okay, thank you, Whitney.
So if we can all just hold that space, that'd be awesome.
That's September 1st at 5:00.
September 1st at 5:00, in the administrative, I believe, Nicole, that's the administrative conference room, or is that in here? Yes, it's in the administrative room, yes. In the administrative room.
Thank you. Any questions for Whitney before we let her go?
Can you send an invite, please?
Nicole?
Nicole, absolutely, yes, yes.
All of it?
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is an update on the West Walnut Street project. I'm going to suggest that we defer that to next month, because one of our absent commissioners has a personal interest, a strong interest in the West Walnut project. So we'll look forward to having that at our September meeting, which the date escapes me.
I can tell you, it is...
Unless I have an objection.
No, that's going to be, that will be September the 14th.
September the 14th. Preston, do you have any comments?
I just wanted to add that, you know, I appreciate you suggesting that, because you're exactly right, Dr. Whitfield really wants to hear that. But I would just add that, that even though we've deferred it now twice, the longer the deferral, the better our detail becomes. Because back then, you know, we were, you know, we were still going through the bid process and all that, and so now, next month, we should have some, some, some firm details for you.
Good, thank you very much. Any other points of business? If not, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned.
You are.